That's as far as I can go. Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm hallucinating.
Great.
Hopefully I can make it through this meeting.
Come on, Scott.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the November 18th, 2019 Crest Hill City Council Meeting to order. If everyone will please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Ray Solomon.
Here.
Glenn Conklin.
Present.
Scott Dyke.
Thank you.
John Verche.
Here.
Barbara Sclaire.
Here.
Claudia Gazal.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
Present.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
Joe Kubo.
Here. Okay, I did receive a telephone call from Alderman Dyke. He is on his way. He is running a little bit late, so he will be here, though. You have before you the minutes of the November 4th, 2019 Crest Hill City Council Meeting. Motion would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Colli-Pietro, seconded by Alderman Sclaire, for the approval of the minutes of the November 4th, 2019 City Council Meeting. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
John Verche.
Yes.
Barbara Sclaire.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubo.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And you also have before you the minutes of the work session held on November 12th, 2019. Motion would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Colli-Pietro, for the approval of the work session minutes of November 12th, 2019. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Barbara Sclaire.
Yes.
Joe Kubo.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we do not have a business promotion this evening, so we'll continue with the agenda. And it is our city administrator, Heather McGuire. Good evening, Heather.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have sent several agenda items for consideration this evening, but the first two deal with the city's bonds. One would be a new issuance of a bond, and one would be the refunding of an existing bond. And with that, I have Jen Courier here from PMA Securities to give some opening comments and some brief explanations, so I will invite her to the podium.
Hi, Jen.
Hello. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me tonight. So first off, the city's upcoming bond issues were recently assigned a double A rating from Standard and Poor's, which is wonderful news. The city was previously rated a double A three by Moody's, so this translates into a one-notch upgrade on the rating. Bob Lewis and Andrew Kim informed me that the mayor and administration gave a fabulous tour of the city to the rating agency when they were here for their site visit, which went over very, very well. So kudos to all of you. We estimate that that one-notch upgrade in the rating will translate into about .05 to .1 percent on your overall borrowing rate on both of the bond issues. So in dollars, that's going to translate into roughly $1,000 to $200,000. So excellent news all around on the rating. Additionally, that higher rating may draw one to two firms that may not have otherwise bid on the bonds. There are some underwriting firms out there that have certain cutoffs as far as rating category goes, as to which issues that they will actually place bids on. So moving from the double A three up to a double A rating will actually invite more interest and a broader base of underwriters to bid on your bonds, which, of course, we welcome more competition on the sales tomorrow. With that said, both of the bond issues are slated to sell tomorrow morning. We'll receive bids at 10:00 and 10:30 a.m., after which we at PMA will finalize the numbers and will provide the mayor and Heather with a summary of the results and ask for their final sign-off at that point in time. We currently expect the savings on the refunding to actually be a little bit better than estimated, so in the neighborhood of about $1.4 million or seven and a half percent on a present value basis. So we're looking forward to share those final results with you tomorrow. The bonds will close on December 3rd, at which time those Build America bonds will be considered refunded, and at that same time, on December 3rd, the city will receive funds for construction. Any questions?
Well, that is all great news. And let me offer my gratitude to our entire staff here. First of all, to our city administrator, Heather McGuire, to our finance director, Ashley Motica, to our community development director, Scott McMaster, to our financial consultant, Mr. Nick Narducci, and to PMA, to both Bob Lewis and Andrew Kim, who was here throughout the entire day with us a couple of weeks ago when we met with Standard and Poor's. And my hats off to each and every one of you. I know that everybody played a key role. Ashley, you were fantastic during the presentation with all the numbers. And Scott, with the community development. And Heather, you were fantastic also with all of your information that you helped throughout the presentation and the tour. And you had a fantastic job done with, from Nick also. And also Andrew and Bob, they led us down the right path, and we really appreciate it, because that is going to be, our residents should be very happy that we are being fiscally responsible. They should be very happy that we are saving them money, both on what we're going to do here shortly, hopefully, and also our refunding and of the PM, of the Build America bonds for the East Source Treatment Plan from 2010, which we saved a lot of money by getting the Build America bonds in 2010, and we are now going to save $1.4 million to our residents with the refunding tonight. So this is going to be, this is going to be fantastic news for everybody. Should be very happy sitting at this table. Thank you for all your hard work that you did here also, because this is all great news for the city of Crest Hill. We're moving forward in the right direction.
Absolutely.
Anybody else with comments before we continue?
I'll just agree with you. Good job, everyone. Thank you for all your work.
Mayor, I think you've said it all already, but it is really great. I couldn't, it's, you know, wonderful what staff pulled off on this, and yes, the residents of Crest Hill are the benefactors of this. It's a great thing.
Yeah, and what is that, just for my own curiosity, I think we're number three out of the bond list now? Isn't there like 21 of them or something on the, on the list of your ratings?
Oh, that's correct. Yes.
So we're number three out of 21.
Mm-hmm.
That's pretty good.
It's very good.
Yeah, that's very good. That is very good. Hopefully maybe number two, what, maybe in six months? What do you think?
You can try. Absolutely. You're already very high.
No, I'm happy, I'm happy with the, with the upgrade of the one. That was, that was great news.
Yeah, we were very, very pleased as well, so.
Okay. Thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
I'll turn it all back over to Heather for the formalities.
Thank you, Mayor. And I would also like to reiterate my appreciation to both Ashley and Scott for their presentations that they gave to PM, or I'm sorry, to SNP as well, and the preparation of all the materials. They were an integral part of that, so thank you both very much. And also to the mayor and council for supporting staff and bringing these recommendations and moving forward with these bonds. I know it was a long process. There was a lot of information, and I know it was sort of going out on a limb to try to get this new rating, so I think it definitely paid off, and I'm excited for that at a staff level on what that's going to bring in terms of return to the city.
Yeah, and this will, it will save money for years to come.
Absolutely.
So.
So with that being said, I would like to present the first of the two ordinances. The first is an ordinance authorizing and providing for the issue of not to exceed $12 million general obligation bonds, and that is to finance the new city hall and police station.
Motion will be in order?
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Sclaire, for an ordinance authorizing and providing for the issue of not to exceed $12 million general obligation bonds. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
John Verche.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Abstain.
Joe Kubo.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Barbara Sclaire.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance number is 1-8-3-0.
Thank you. And the next ordinance is in relation to the refunding of the Build America bonds. This is an ordinance authorizing and providing for the issue of not to exceed $19 million general obligation refunding bonds for the purpose of refunding the outstanding alternate bonds for the Build America bonds.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Colli-Pietro, for an ordinance authorizing and providing for the issue of not to exceed $19 million general obligation refunding bonds. Questions or comments in regards to the motion?
Mayor, if I could just make a quick comment, like I've said in previous meetings, I just have to abstain from these votes due to my line of work. I'm certainly excited about the progress and the movements of everything going forward. Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Nate Albert.
Abstain.
Joe Kubo.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Barbara Sclaire.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item for consideration is for the work session last week. We are seeking approval to cancel the December 23rd and 30th work sessions pending any items that may arise, so we will withhold and be able to schedule those if need be.
So moved, Mayor. Second.
Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Dyke, for the cancellation of the December 23rd and December 30th work session unless needed to be called at that time. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
John Verche.
Yes.
Barbara Sclaire.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Joe Kubo.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Barbara Sclaire.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And the final item I have for approval this evening is a resolution adopting a disclosure compliance policy of the city of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois. This was a recommendation made by Chapman and Cutler, our bond counsel, to clarify some policies in relation to disclosures on those bonds, specifically targeting any information to the bondholder of any liabilities that arise during that process. So I'd be seeking approval this evening.
Is this the one, Heather, where you're the officer?
That is correct. The disclosure officer.
So I would like it on the record also that you are the officer.
That is correct, yes.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Colli-Pietro, for adoption of the resolution adopting a disclosure compliance policy of the city of Crest Hill. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Barbara Sclaire.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Abstain.
Joe Kubo.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution number is 1-0-5-9.
Thank you. That was the final item I had this evening on a, on a list of heavy items there, but I do have the informational report on file. We will be holding a work session on November 25th. Current topics include the city hall and police station facade, as well as the republic services waste proposal, with additional topics still being developed. I'd be happy to answer any other questions this evening.
Any questions of city administrator? All right, thanks, Heather. Moving on, our public works department, our director of water and wastewater, Mr. Mark Seifert's here this evening. Good evening, Mark.
Good evening, Mayor and council. We have nothing formal on the agenda, but I would like to let council know that our sidewalk replacement and curb replacement from water main break, concrete work has begun as of last Friday. They started saw cutting. They should be pouring concrete later this week, and restoration soon to follow. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mark, what was going on at Gaylord and came right in front of our credit union? They were tearing everything up there?
That was, it was even one of the other utility companies, I believe it was Nikor.
Okay.
We just got called out there for emergency jewelry locations.
Okay.
Nikor's been, as you know, Nikor's been doing a lot of work throughout town, and with everybody turning the heat on right now, it's probably a good time for them to do all this work.
Thanks, Mark.
Any question, is that it, Mark?
That's it.
Any other questions of Mark? Yeah, just to piggyback on the Nikor, that is Nikor that's doing all the digging throughout the city, mostly on the east end of town. I've been receiving a couple of phone calls here. Some have not left their name or their address to be able, or their number to be able to call them back, but just so you know, that we have no control over what Nikor does with the gas lines. They certainly have more experience dealing with the gas lines than we do. You know, if you have any concerns or questions of why they're out there now, you should probably call Nikor and not the city of Crest Hill. We are cooperating with them. As soon as we got notified that they are going to be digging, they are making upgrades and improvements to the gas lines that are more than 60 years old, so they are making an improvement, and I'm sure they do work year-round, just like we work year-round. And so just have some consideration. I am sure and confident that they will, they will restore everything that they will damage in your yards or in the streets. May not be until next spring to do the job properly, but it will be restored. Anybody else, questions or comments? All right, thanks, Mark. Moving on to community development department, our community development director, Scott McMaster. Good evening, Scott.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I have no agenda items this evening, but I do have one announcement, being that it is less than two weeks from the fourth annual winter festival. That will be Saturday, November 30th, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. And as usual, that will be right here at city hall parking lot. This year's entertainment will be the Jib Brothers Band and their local Dick Tizek and his friends here of Crest Hill. And the horse and hay rack rides will be there, live reindeer pony rides, Santa Claus, and then the mayor will be flipping the switch with some special guests from the local schools here. But if you would give me just a minute to run through this year's sponsors, I will rattle them off as best I can. Some of the big sponsors this year is Newmark Credit Union, Flooring First, Goofy G's, which is actually an ice cream parlor that will be opening next summer, so they're currently working on construction where they're located, but they were very good enough to be a sponsor for this year's event, so we're excited to have them. Window World, Charter Fitness, JM Printers, Remax Ultimate Professionals, American Italian Cultural Society, Firewater, the Lions Club will be there as well, Alguero, TLC Ingredients, Reasonable Tree Experts, Willow Falls Hair Cuddery, Oakland Storage, or Oakland Avenue Storage, Mayor Vicki Solomon, Alderman Nate and Jill Albert, and Alderman Marco and Lynn Colli-Pietro. So I wish to thank all those sponsors and the vendors this year for making this event possible. I think it's a very good event. Every year we have very good weather, and it's just a good chance for a lot of local businesses to get the word out about their business, especially for newer ones like Goofy G's that I think is going to be a big draw this year. So I look forward to seeing everybody out there.
Are they going to have samples?
They are expecting to have samples, yes. Yeah, so we're excited about that as well.
Me too.
So with that, I have nothing.
Any questions of community development? And there will also be a table here from the U.S. Census Bureau.
That's correct, yes.
And the city of Crest Hill has partnered with the Spanish Community Center and the city of Joliet for the Census 2020. There will be information that we're going to be passing out. This is very important to the city of Crest Hill, also that we get an accurate count, because the funding that we get throughout the year to do projects from the state of Illinois is dependent on what our actual census numbers are. So I ask for everybody's cooperation for the Census Bureau to get an accurate count for the city of Crest Hill. They will, we will be taking applications, probably at the first of the year, for census takers. There's going to be online, you'll be able to do it online this year. They're going to have kiosks at the library. We've set that up with them. You will get a mailed copy also, so there's going to be several ways for you to respond to the census questions, and if you do not respond, then they will take, census takers will be walking the community probably in the spring, in April, in the summer, to find out exactly how many people live in your home. So I ask for your cooperation when they do come to the door, when you do receive it in the mail or online, that you do fill it out, because it is very important to our municipality that we have the right number, so we get the accurate amount of funding that is available through the state of Illinois. Any other questions for Scott? Thanks, Scott. Moving on to police department, our police chief, Ed Clark. Good evening, Ed.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I do not have anything on the agenda this evening. Information is in your packets, and I will entertain any questions.
Questions of the police chief? All right, thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Moving on to the mayor's report. I am going to give you some information in regards to the 2019 tax levy estimates. We had a work session last Monday, Monday evening, so I am going to give you the general summary of the amounts levied for all funds. The general corporate fund, $1,500,000. The police pension fund, $779,975. The Illinois municipal retirement fund, $20,000. Social Security tax fund, $20,000. Total tax levy for all funds, $2,315,975. This represents a 1.0499% increase over the taxes that were levied in 2018, and we are anticipating to be passing the final levied amounts at the, at our December 16th, 2019 city council meeting. Anything you'd like to add, Ashley, in regards to that? Any questions or comments from council in regards to the levy numbers for 2019? Hearing none. I just have a couple of other announcements.
Mayor, we do need a formal vote on that.
Oh, we do?
Yes.
Okay. Motion would be in order for those numbers?
So moved, just presented.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Gazal. Questions or comments in regards to the motion for the 2019 tax levy estimates? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
No.
Barbara Sclaire.
Yes.
Marco Colli-Pietro.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubo.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, just, good. Just a couple of comments from the mayor. Last week was Veterans Day. I will tell you, it's a very busy time here in Crest Hill. Just, just to let you know that my wife and I attended, actually on the Thursday of the, or Friday of the week prior to Veterans Day, Chaney-Maji School had a ceremony at the school for all the veterans, and there were several veterans that were in the audience. On Saturday night, or Friday afternoon, we went down to Joliet Central, since part of Joliet Township High School is in Crest Hill's area. They do a fantastic job there. They had several veterans present that they introduced, and they had a band and songs and everything else. That was a very nice program also. On Saturday night, Vicki and I went to Caroline Lakes. They always do a very respectful, very solemn program. Flag folding ceremony there from Lewis University was there also. And then on, on the actual day, on Monday, on Veterans Day, we started out at Richland School at nine o'clock, Lockport Township ROTC. Students were there with a flag folding ceremony. They have a very respectful, very solemn program there. I will say that both of our schools, all three schools, I was very proud how well behaved all of the students were, even the young children, were very respectful to our flag, very respectful to the veterans of all three schools that we visited. After that, then we went to the Rialto for the Will County Ceremony. That was held inside for the first time this year. It's usually outside, but due to the cold weather, they moved the venue inside, and there was a very large crowd for that one, and we finished up at Willow Falls in the afternoon, and Valerie does a fantastic job at Willow Falls for all the veterans, and there were probably 50 or so veterans that are at Willow Falls, so they were all recognized. And again, she does a very solemn, respectful job, performance for all the veterans, for veterans there. Also, and Frankfurt Brass Band was there with the entertainment. So thanks to all the veterans for all the sacrifices you made in your life for the freedoms that we enjoy today. And then also, we had two ribbon cuttings in the last two weeks, and the first one was at Robert Sewing Center on Weber Road for their 20-year anniversary celebration. And let me see, Alderman Sclaire and Alderman Gazal, Alderman Verche were present at that one. And then we had, just Saturday, we had grand opening ribbon cutting at Speedway Gas Station. That is a beautiful gas station. They are very crowded, they are very busy, they are going to be a tremendous asset to the city of Crest Hill with, it's like a mini grocery store in there, everything that you can buy, from food items to alcohol, they will have video gaming there, so it was a great location for them. They have a lot of traffic along the Weber Road corridor, and hopefully it's going to start the corridor moving a little bit quicker than anticipated for some future business along, along their corridor. And let's see, there was Alderman Gazal, Alderman Sclaire, Alderman Verche, Alderman Colli-Pietro, Alderman Albert, city clerk Hackney, and...
Alderman Joe came.
Joe came late.
Oh, Joe came in? Oh, yeah, we, I, we had to get to a wake after that, so I miss Joe. But Alderman Kubo was there also, and Scott McMaster was there at both of them also. So congratulations to all those businesses, too. We hope that they are here for a very long time also. Okay, then?
Can I comment? Just for the record, when I got off work, I went to both of those, even though the majority of the people had gone. I just want people to know that when I left my job, I did go to both of those on both of those dates.
Okay, anybody else? All right, moving on. City clerks report. Vicki Hackney, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I do have one item on the agenda this evening. The Autumn Ridge Town Homeowners Association is requesting use of the council chambers from 6:30 to 9:00 p.m. for their 2020 association meetings. These are scheduled for February 6th, 2020, March 5th, 2020, April 2nd, 2020, May 7th, 6th, 2020, March 5th, 2020, April 2nd, 2020, May 7th, 2020, June 4th, July 2nd, August 6th, September 3rd, October 1st, and November 5th. Request would be to, motion to approve these dates. And, we have checked the calendar. The dates are available.
So moved.
Second.
All right. We have motion by Alderwoman Skler, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal for the approval of the Autumn Ridge Town Homes, use of the council chambers on those dates. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Joe Kubo?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Marco Cola de Pietro?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
John Boucher?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Barbara Skler?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. And, we will notify them. That's all I have this evening. Just very happy Thanksgiving to everyone, city staff, employees, council, and to the residents. Be safe and enjoy your turkey day. Thank you. That's all I have this evening.
Questions of city clerk? Thanks, Beck.
Thank you, Ray.
Moving on to our treasurer's report. Glenn Conklin, good evening, Glenn.
Well, good evening, Ray, city council. I'd like to report regular overtime payroll from 10/28/19 through 11/10 of 19, in the amount of $213,951.37. The only item I seek action on tonight is I request your approval of our list of bills, which totaled in that same time period of $821,224.32.
So moved, is presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alderwoman Oberlin, seconded by Alderwoman Skler for the list of bills. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Marco Cola de Pietro?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubo?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Boucher?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Barbara Skler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I thank you all. And, I want to entertain any questions if you have them.
Any questions of city treasurer? Thanks, Glenn.
Thank you all, and happy Thanksgiving.
Unfinished business. We have nothing on the agenda. Anybody? New business? Anyone? Committee liaisons on reports.
Hey, tell all the clerks this griswold's out there.
The 2019 Christmas lights contest is quickly approaching. Forms are available on the website, also here at city hall. The deadline to sign up at your house is December 6th. The awards will be presented at the December 16th, 2019 city council meeting. So, if you light it up nice and bright, fill out an application. Or, if you have a neighbor that also lights it up, maybe throw that in their mailbox or drop it off at their house.
And the elves will be out judging December 7th through December 14th. So, if your displays are special in any way, make sure that you have them on that week for the elves to see. Thanks.
Anyone else? Committee liaisons on reports. Okay, city council comments. Positive city council comments? Anything you'd like to share with your constituents? Anyone like to go first this evening? Alderwoman Oberlin, word three.
Well, I have several things. First of all, I do want to congratulate Speedway on their grand opening. It was a little hectic when I went in there. They were still having issues, but they were really, the people coming and going. And, I want to congratulate Maria Yacos. She had a grand opening at Willow Falls for her, her business. It was sponsored by the Joliet Chamber, but several of us did go over there and attend that. That was very nice. I also want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving out there. Have a good time with your families. And, lastly, we were talking a lot about veterans. And, we do, we are collecting at, at Newmark, at all the Newmark locations for veterans for wreaths across America, which is a wonderful, wonderful tribute where Newmark will match whatever we collect to double the money for the wreaths. And, we really want to try to get as many wreaths on the veterans' graves at Abraham Lincoln as we possibly can. So, if you're in the area and you'd like to help contribute, we would really appreciate that. And, we'd love to really honor our veterans. So, thank you.
Alderman Cola de Pietro.
I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving as well. And, I'd like to congratulate my nephew for catching his first NFL touchdown pass.
Who was that?
Troy Fumagalli.
Oh.
Denver Broncos.
They lost.
Really lost.
They lost.
Good, easy win.
Good for him. Word four, Alderman Albert.
What about your daughter?
I'll wait till she gets married.
No, I also do want to just wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. And, I really look forward to seeing everybody at the Winter Fest. My family has a great time. It's, it's an awesome opportunity to come out and see some beautiful lights, also see Santa, like Scott was mentioning. Lot of fun activities. So, hope to see everybody there.
Alderman Kubo.
Mayor, I'm just going to take a second opportunity to congratulate staff on this bond rating increase. That, that was really nice. And, I know there was a lot of effort put behind that. And, and the timing couldn't have been better for what lies ahead for the city. So, it's, it's really great. And, happy Thanksgiving to the residents of Crest Hill.
Word two, Alderwoman Gazal.
I want to wish the staff again, good job on the bond, Ashley. You're doing an amazing job. Scott, I do want to thank you. You've been doing a lot in the city. And, you can, you can see it. You can see your work, your hard work. It's finally showing up with everything that you do. You don't get recognized enough. I want to thank you personally for that, for your hard work and your dedication. And, I want to wish all the Crest Hill residents, staff, city staff, and city council a very blessed, happy Thanksgiving. And, that's it.
Alderwoman Skler.
Well, I would just like to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy your turkey.
Word one, Alderman Boucher.
Well, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. And, thanks for doing a good job. And, all your cohorts with you.
Alderman Dyke.
Yeah, I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Hopefully, everyone takes a little time that day to think of all the things they're thankful for and how blessed we all really are. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Okay. Public comment. If anyone would like to address city council, you'd step to the podium, state your, state your name for the record. Your address is optional. Let the record show that no one has approached the podium. To our city administrator, Heather,